Good evening. I call to order this regular joint meeting of the Minnehaha County and Sioux Falls Planning Commissions, and I will begin with a few introductory comments. My name is Bonnie Duffy. I am the Chair for the County Planning Commission, and Kurt Johnson is here tonight for the City Planning Commission. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cellphones are turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www minnehaha county.org site for viewing by the general public. The two Planning Commissions work together on land use and zoning matters within the rural areas surrounding the city. This area is displayed on the screen. When this joint hearing is completed, the Joint Sioux Falls and County Planning Commission will adjourn, and the next regular business meeting will begin to consider items beyond the joint zoning jurisdiction with Sioux Falls. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the Planning Office by Monday, April 4th at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will refer to the County Commission and City Council for a joint hearing on Tuesday, April 26th at or after 5:00 PM. That meeting is held in Carnegie Town Hall at 235 West Hand Street. First on our agenda tonight is public input. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? We'll move on to the regular agenda. We will follow our normal hearing procedure by requesting Planning Staff to present a report on each item, and then request the petitioner to come to the podium and make a statement or answer any questions. Anyone from the audience wishing to address the item shall be recognized by the Chair, move to the podium, and state your name and address for the record. The Planning Commission will then discuss the matter and take appropriate action. Okay, the first item on the regular agenda is the approval of the minutes of the February 28th, 2022 meeting. Do I have a meeting or a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the February 28th meeting on the county side. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes on the county side.
The city side, we have approved motion to approve the minutes from the February 28th, 2022 meeting. Do I have a motion on the city side?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Now, let's approve on the city side. Thank you.
Item number two is Conditional Use Permit 22-23 to allow a limited use kennel/pat grooming on the property legally described as Lot 1 of Harnack, Track 1, the west half, the southwest quarter, Section 28, Township 102 North, Range 50 West. That is in Benton Township. Petitioner is Devon Bobbledyke. He's also the landowner. That's approximately 2.5 miles west of Sioux Falls. Mason?
Good evening, Commissioners. Mason Stephan, County Planning Office. Yeah, so as Chair Duffy just explained, this request would allow a limited use kennel for pet grooming on the property. This operation was referred to the County Planning Office by the County Building Inspector when he noticed that the petitioner had placed a sign on the property for pet grooming. So this facility would be a limited use kennel, so we're going on the kennel definition in the ordinance, and the kennel definition in the ordinance states that it's any premise or portion thereon where cats, dogs, or other household pets are raised, trained, boarded, harbored, or kept for remuneration. Also, along with this request, the petitioner submitted a site plan, which I will go to here, and a short narrative on the site plan there. You can see that there's current expansion maybe for the driveway, as you can see on the west side of their current driveway, but the current parking for the operation would be in front of the garage on a cement concrete or on a concrete pad. The hours of operation for the request would be Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and the dog grooming would take place inside the residence and there'd be no outdoor kenneling of the animals. Staff visited the property on March 11th, and the proposed property is located close to the intersection of two major highways. There is limited residential development in the area right now, but there is the Shatters Addition subdivision, which is currently a vacant eight-lot subdivision to the east, but this request shouldn't affect any future residential development in this area. Furthermore, since this request is coming off of a paved state highway, the increase in traffic for the request should not cause any dust concerns on the property, and the driveway was easily visible when I was driving out there. Since this request was, is in, within the joint jurisdictional boundary with the City of Sioux Falls, it was sent to City Planning Staff for comment. The City Planning Staff did recommend denial of the request because they expressed concerns that the proposed use does not meet the definition of a kennel, and that the Public Works Department would not approve expanding the approach on SD Highway 38. From the county's perspective, the definition of a kennel includes household pets that are kept for remuneration, which that word is defined as money paid for work or service, so the proposed use of pet grooming would fall underneath that definition. And finally, as you can see on this site plan, the proposed expansion of the driveway would happen in the petitioner's property, and the actual access off of SD Highway 38 would not be changed. So for any conditional use permit, we look at six general criteria on how this proposed use will affect the current uses in the area. So number one is the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the surrounding area for the uses already permitted, and upon property values within the surrounding area. Generally, this type of home occupation should have limited effect and impact on neighboring properties. The hours of operation are limited to normal business hours, and the hours of operation will be a condition of approval. Additionally, the pet grooming will take place entirely within a residence, which should limit any potential nuisances. Number two is the effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. Most of the vacant land in the area is agricultural in use, and the remaining vacant land is designated for the large lots of residential in the Shatters Addition, as mentioned earlier. Any residential development in the area is dependent on building eligibility, and most of the building eligibility are located in that Shatters Addition. Number three is that utilities, access roads, drainage, and/or other necessary utilities are provided. The property does have access onto SD Highway 38, and since the current house on the property will be used, the drainage should not be impacted. Number four is that off-street parking and loading requirements are met. There shouldn't be a lot of daily visits to this operation, so there shouldn't be abundant need for off-street parking, but the petitioner has shown that they have at least three paved parking spaces as of now, and current expansion on their side of the line in the future. Number five is that measures are taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting, inclusive of lighted signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. The operation, like I said, will take place within the structure, and there will not be any animals on the property outside of business hours, except if the petitioner does have their own animals. Any public nuisance violations will be addressed upon the Planning Department receiving a complaint about the property. Number six is that health, safety, general welfare of the public and comprehensive plan. The subject property is located along State Highway 38, near a major intersection of two highways. It's also located in the transition area between the City of Sioux Falls and the City of Hartford, and the transition area in the county is, the primary purpose of them is to maintain the rural landscape, and the proposed use would not greatly affect the rural landscape of the county. With that, the staff is recommending approval of Conditional Use Permit 22-23 with eight conditions, and I can read those conditions if you would like.
We have them in our documents, so...
Okay. Is there any questions for me? Otherwise, I'll let the petitioner speak.
I guess not at this time. Is the petitioner here? Will you please come forward, state your name and address?
My name is Devon Bobbledyke. I live at 46808 Highway 38 in Sioux Falls.
Any questions for him?
Ma'am Chair, I was just gonna ask, how many do I do a day typically, or what do you think?
Well, it's just my wife and I, so max, we would each do six, so 12 maximum appointments a day, but generally, we have clients that have multiple dogs that drop off, so we usually don't see more than seven or eight people in a day.
Are they there for very long, or...?
So what we do is we take the dogs and we take the dogs in our garage, and we do the drop-off there, go through what the services of the clients are looking for, and then from that point, we take the dogs inside to our grooming area, and the clients, sometimes they'll stay, but most of the time, they'll run errands at Walmart or whatever up the road, and then, and when we're done, they'll come back and pick them up, so.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Could you guys just give me a little bit more history about your business? Have you been doing this for a while, or this is just brand new?
Fairly new. We started in November, thinking that we had everything ready, and I guess we were aware that we needed to do the conditional use permit. However, you know, if I'd have thought about it a little more, I'd have probably figured that out. But yeah, we've been operating since beginning, or middle of November. My wife's been grooming for about four years now.
Any other questions for him? I guess not at this time. Is there anyone else in the audience cared to address this item?
Madam Chair, inasmuch as there's no one objecting to this, I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions listed.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to approve Conditional Use Permit 22-23 with all conditions. All those in favor on the county side?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes on the county side.
Commissioners, we have an approved Conditional Use Permit on the county side. Do I have a motion on the city side?
A motion to approve with the conditions listed as well?
Second.
Motion to approve with the eight conditions and a second. Any further discussion? Very good. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
When your issue is done, it would be good to leave the room, because we don't have as much seating as we normally do, so you're good to go.
You're free to go. Okay, we'll move on to item number three. It's Conditional Use Permit 22-24 to allow a temporary fireworks sales on the property legally described as Harz subdivision of Track 1, the east half, and the west 175 feet of Lot 1, Pleasant View Acres, north half, southeast quarter, and the south half, northeast quarter, Section 19, Township 101 North, Range 48 West. That is Split Rock Township. Petitioner is Mike Denning. Property owner is Chris Sweeney. He's located at 6601 East Arrowhead Parkway. Mason?
Yes. Whoops. So yeah, this request would allow temporary fireworks sales on the subject property. This property is located about 300 feet west of the intersection of South Commerce Avenue and East Arrowhead Parkway. This property is currently zoned for commercial with that storage building in the southeast corner, and the properties to the northeast and south are all zoned commercial as well, and the property to the west is a rural residential property. The petitioner for this request, Mike Denning, has operated a temporary fireworks stand since 2014 at 1001 South Stokes Avenue, which is just on the other side of South Stokes, or other side of, outside of this picture, and that is at Uncle Ed's Meats. And this request would move that operation down the street to this location at 6601 East Arrowhead Parkway, and the operation at 1001 South Stokes Avenue would no longer be operational. Finally, the petitioner is moving this request to this location as opposed to staying on the current one, because Uncle Ed and Meats is expanding, so there shouldn't be any problem in the future of having two fireworks stands this close together. So approval of this request would allow nine-day retail sale of fireworks from June 27th to July 5th, and fireworks would be sold from a tent in the northeast corner of the property, and the parking would be on the north side of that access that you can see on the picture there. The petitioner would also be placing cones on the driveway, which you can sort of see on the site plan. They're about right here, if you can see where my mouse is, and that would be in order to block anybody who comes to the fireworks stand from going too far south to that rural residential property to the west, or to the storage building on the south edge of this property. The petitioner would also be putting temporary flags and signs along the access in order to signalize parking, and there will be a banner sign that says fireworks on the storage building to advertise the new location. And then, since this request is in the same general location as the operation that Mike Denning has operated for about eight years now, there shouldn't be any negative impact on traffic or development in the area. Again, since this request is located in the joint jurisdictional area, the City of Sioux Falls Planning Staff was sent the materials for review. The City Planning Staff is also recommending denial of this request. They raised concerns with the temporary fireworks stand being located adjacent to a rural residential property, and that the petitioner should be required to remove the access to the property off of East Arrowhead that you can see on the north side of the property there. The county staff finds that the temporary sale of fireworks shouldn't greatly affect the rural residential property any more than the already permanent commercial uses in the area, and the petitioner has already stated that he will not be using the access off of East Arrowhead Parkway, only the access off of Commerce Avenue, and there has been a condition of approval to ensure that this stays the case. Again, there are about six general requirements that we look at for conditional use permits. The first is the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the surrounding area for the uses permitted. Since this is a limited timeframe for the fireworks stand, there shouldn't be a negative impact, and the hours of operation will be limited from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, which is consistent with other fireworks stands. Number two is the effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property. Temporary nature of the proposed use should not impact any future development, and the surrounding properties are already largely commercial, so that shouldn't affect anything as well. Number three is that utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. Access to the site will be provided via the access off of Commerce Avenue that I stated, and that will be the only access that should be used on the property. The petitioner also stated that he'll have a porta potty and a dumpster on the property south of the tent, which should be all the utilities necessary for the property. Number four is that off-street parking and loading requirements are met. The parking for the fireworks stand, as I said earlier, will be located on the north side of that access, and then on the west side, on the very west portion of the property, northwest corner, and that should be plenty of parking for the temporary fireworks sales. Number five is that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting. The temporary use should not create any odor, fumes, dust, or vibration. Any lighting on the tent should be directed away from the highway and away from the rural residential property. Several other rural fireworks stands have conducted demonstration, demonstration displays of fireworks, and this may cause a temporary noise issue, but the displays usually take place when other properties in the area can also shoot off their fireworks, and any display must meet state rules. Number six is that the health, safety, general welfare of the public and the comprehensive plan. The proposal is for a temporary use adjacent to a state highway, and the land is already zoned for commercial, in an area that's already heavily zoned for commercial. So, and the existing fireworks stand is run by a petitioner that has run a fireworks stand in the area for about eight years. And then, I'll just go over some of the pictures that I took on my site visit. So this is at the top of the hill, looking down towards East Arrowhead Parkway. So that access that you can see straight in front of me is the access between those trees that will not be used, and it forks off to the right there. That's the access that will be used onto the property. This is looking down from that same hill down toward the actual tent will be used. You can sort of see the other commercial building on the other property there in the right of the image. And then, this is looking where the parking would be on the property, so along this area up to the west, there would be where the parking would be located. And then, this is a picture looking down on the access up to where the tent would be approximately located, and again, you can see that other structure there for the property to the east, and then that's the same general picture, just back towards the storage barn on the property. And then, here is the intersection between Commerce Avenue and, or the driveway, Commerce Avenue, and East Arrowhead Parkway. This is where they all converge there, so this would be the access that the temporary signage would be along. And then, I'll go back to the site plan there, and if there's any questions, I'm available. Yes?
Just got one question, and that would be, is there any regulations on the size of the signage that he can per, can have?
Yes. I don't know if I have, I think I might have it over there, but, so, temporary signs are, basically, you just have to give us 16-day notice from when they're going to be put out, which is what this conditional use would be, so that would be all the flags along the driveway, and then the temporary sign for the parking. And then, the banner on the, on the building is limited to two square feet for every foot of frontage, so I think we calculated it out where he could have like 200 square feet on that, on the frontage of that building, but it's only gonna be, it's gonna be a small banner, so he won't go over that.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Anything else?
Any other questions for him?
City side?
I do have a question. What's the parking requirements on something like this?
I guess, I don't know if there's, I couldn't find anything in the ordinance specifically for temporary parking for temporary uses, so I guess generally, we would do the general requirement in the ordinance is a spot for every 300 square feet. So if you did, the, the tent is 60 by 30, I believe, and I think he has quite a few parking spaces there, so he should meet that general 300 square feet per, or parking space per 300 square feet.
And do we know what, in the south part, what, the operation, what's inside that building?
It's just a storage building.
Okay, and there's no like chemicals or anything like that?
No, no, it's just a, he, I think, so the same person who owns Arrowhead Automotive to the east there, right here, also owns this, and so, right now, there's just a trailer behind it, and I think he just puts his excess trailers there, so it's just a storage building.
And then, is there gonna be any problems with the lights from the cars going into the neighbor's yard, into their house or residence, or anything like that?
I have not heard anything from the neighbors having that issue. I think the cones will help not have them go up so far, because it, based on where the tent is, they should turn away from, their lights should turn away from that house before they get up too far to where it should be an issue for that property.
Thank you.
Another question. The main approach to that rural residential property is from the south, correct?
Yes, it is off of this circle down here, so this is their main approach, if you can see my mouse, off of this circle, and yeah, this is just their extra, I don't even think this is actually a legal approach. They just use it as an approach to their garage here, but again, I don't, I think the petitioner, Mike Denning, has talked to them about the cones on the property, so he can talk a little bit more about that, so.
Very good, and overall, would you describe the condition of that gravel road coming off of Commerce Avenue as good condition? It looked pretty soft, not just because of the snow, but is it gonna be able to handle a lot of traffic if it should get soft?
Yeah, and I was actually just told, I think, end of last week, that they just resurfaced that with new gravel, so I think it should be good.
Thank you.
Is this for him? I guess not at this time. Is the petitioner here? Will you please step forward, state your name and address?
Mike Denning, 6605 West 52nd Street, Sioux Falls. First off, I want to say thank you for allowing me to be here today. The reason why I'm here today is Uncle Ed's location we've been at for many years. Matt is expanding his business, and he gave me a heads up and said, hey, sorry, but we're gonna grow our business. I said, no problem, you know, been good, so I started looking, you know, based on what Matt's shared with me. Some things that I want to share with you, on March 11th, I met with the Brett, Brent and Shasta Colt, the people that live at that residential right there on the very end. We had a nice meeting, you know, they was being proactive. I got their name and number from Chris at Autobody. He said, you might want to go talk to them before you even go, so I did, and so we had a good meeting, and then they sent me a letter here. I don't know if you want to pass it around, or you want me to read it, but during our meeting on March 11th regarding the temporary sale fireworks from June 27th through July 5th, Mike has agreed to keep the temporary stand to the east side of the lot that's adjacent to the parcel, and just on the south side of the access road running through the property, basically as far as away they can from their house. He has also agreed to place temporary roadblocks on the east side end of their property in order to prevent customers from accessing, accessing their property and through the existing road. It's like, like Mason shared with you, that, that road coming off the highway, going through the trees, we're gonna block that off right down by the highway. Apparently, they have some people that use that now, which is not good, but we'll block that off while we're there, and then we're gonna have barricade closer to their actual property up there, where you see the, this little circle. That's a big cement slab there. So we're gonna block that off before they're, before they, anybody can, nobody's gonna get to their, their residence through there, unless they run it, so. So that's one of the things they said, and I said, not a problem. I'll get that taken care of. I also shared with them, one of the things we do is we have overnight security. We have ex-law enforcement people, some of them are, that work from 10:00 PM to 10:00 in the morning, and they will have that at that tent. It's been at that tent. So I take this very serious, so we don't have any crazy things going on when we're not there, so there is live security there through the night. So, all that being said, with all the safety measures in place, we are satisfied with Mike's receiving the, his temporary permit to sell fireworks. If you need this copy, I'd be glad to leave it with you. Has it down there? You know, all the recommendations, I've worked with the county and the city in the past on these conditional permits, and all those are very reasonable, and that's what we do, so. We're not there, only today, we're only there to sell fireworks. We're not there to shoot fireworks off. There won't be any fireworks shot off by us. None, zero. We're only there for retail sales, so. I'm open for any questions.
So, when they say fireworks display, it, it doesn't mean you're doing, like lighting them off to show what they are. It's just literally a display, like a showcase?
Yeah, well, there's two terms on that. Fireworks display could be like, we do the fireworks show for the Sioux Empire Fairgrounds.
Okay.
We do that. That's a whole different division of our company.
Okay.
So that's like a fire display. There's none of that going on there. We're not putting on any of that. The actual displaying of fireworks inside the tent, you know, to have, keep it secured, we do that. Just, that's just for merchandising, marketing, you know. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, so you haven't really had an issue with people lighting off fireworks once they, you know, once they get them, they don't, you haven't had an issue with that?
I hope not. Not yet. I mean, unfortunately, as we all know, alcohol and fireworks do not go together, but sometimes there's crazy people out there.
Do you have to post like no smoking signs, or...?
No smoking signs gotta go up. You can't smoke within 25 feet of the tent. We put them inside the tent. We put them outside the tent. There's other signs we gotta put up too, about how far away you gotta be, you know, for shooting off fireworks, and I mean, everything by the NFPA, which is National Fire Protection Act, we have to follow 1124 in the fireworks. Act, we have to follow 1124 in the fireworks industry. Fire departments in, across the United States follow 1123, I believe, so. It's, it's very strict, and we follow the rules.
And then, one other question about the security. You have the security there overnight, do you have that during the day too, or...
All the employees are there during the day to, to take care of the business, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Becky.
So you would be comfortable with an 11th, and maybe that isn't necessary, Mason, but with an 11th statement that says the stand will be located to the east of the property with cones to prevent access to other areas of the property?
What is that?
Based on the letter that you just read from your neighbor?
Yeah, there's, there's gonna be cones right by the neighbor's house, up by their house, and there's gonna be cones down at the end of that road, that highway, going through the trees, so.
I was just gonna say, Becky, so condition one is that the property shall adhere to the submitted site plan and narrative, so everything on the site plan, they have to, have to comply with, so that should just fall underneath that one.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for him? It's not at this time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would, that wants to address this item? Okay, commissioners?
Can we, can we have Fletcher come up and give a response from the city of why?
Sure.
Is there a denial?
Fletcher Lake Hawk, urban planner with city Sioux Falls. Our recommendation is just based on, if it were in the city, we wouldn't be recommending approval, and our concern just being the house next door, but as you heard, the neighbor did write and say that they were okay with it, so we're okay with the county's recommendation.
So if this was in the city, would there be any, like, fire things that would have to be in place?
No, fireworks wouldn't be allowed in the city, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners?
Is there anyone else opposed to it?
No one? Anyone else care to address this item?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
With the conditions.
I have a motion, a second on the county side for conditional use permit 22-24, and that is with all conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes on the county side.
Commissioners, we have an approved motion on the city side to approve this conditional use permit for the fireworks stand. Is there a motion on the city side?
Motion for approval with the ten conditions.
I'll second.
Got a motion for approval with the ten conditions and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just think since the neighbor is okay with it, and, you know, that was the biggest thing that the city had a problem with, that I'd be in favor for it.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no? Approval on the city side.
The old business? The new?
To adjourn the joint meeting?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes on the county side.
Commissioners, I look for a motion to adjourn the joint meeting.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just say, for those in the hall...